All right, I would like to welcome everybody to the Acton Selectmen's meeting. Today is August, is it the 22nd?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I'm ahead of myself. First, we're gonna salute the flag, and bear with me, this is my first time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, so we need to approve the agenda of August 14th?
Well, will you approve the agenda of tonight? I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Can I do that? Okay, I'll second that. All right.
All in favor?
All in favor?
There you go.
I'm sorry, I'm getting distracted. I just hear people chit-chat in the hallway. All right, so what we're gonna do now is minutes of the last meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of August 14th.
Let's see if you can make them.
Second that.
I'll second that. I'm on the wrong, I'll second that. We'll make a motion?
All in favor.
All in favor. Department head committee chair updates. Do we have anybody here for that? No?
Not yet.
Not yet? You don't have a, you don't have a time yet for?
No, we're working on it.
All right, all right. Then I guess the next thing would be old business. A is road association funds.
I think that the way that left from the last meeting is that when the road committee had their next meeting, they were gonna review the documents and get back to the board in regards to what the next step was.
Right.
Property maintenance survey.
We are looking at a week left of getting the surveys, so if you haven't filled one out yet, or you have any questions, certainly come see me before the end of the month. Right now, we're at 265 that have been collected.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess we'll move on to new business.
See, I'm here to help.
I appreciate it. Town report.
Town report. So, Selectman Miller asked that I put this on the agenda. It's that time of year to start thinking about the town report for fiscal year 2017, 2018. We just finished our audit, so we're waiting for that information to come back. But really, what I need from the board is some commitment dates. When do we want to tell the committees and departments that they need to have the documents in by? Just a little recap, last year, copy of the memo that I sent out last year.
Did we do it a little early?
Well, we're, I mean, last year, we sent this memo out on September 19th, so we're actually ahead of the schedule. Go Elise.
Yeah, I'm looking at October 1st as a due date. I don't see why nobody can-
So it's only five days earlier than last year.
Just, that's it?
Yeah, so if you could see that everything had to be in by August 6th, so if we're sending the memo out essentially six weeks early, couldn't we, let me move it up to maybe, I mean, if we got these memos out by Monday, and it took maybe three or four weeks to put your report together, one, two, three, how about?
Maybe the end of September?
Friday, September 21st.
Yep.
And we're gonna use the same format that we used last year. We're asking everybody to do it in a Microsoft Word format. Certainly, if they aren't able to do that, we will assist them in the town office, but everything's electronic now, so it turns into one big PDF, so hard copies don't do us any good.
I just wanna remind people, sorry, I can't talk to you. These town reports are a piece of history, and people like to look back at numbers and figures, and who was there, and who did what. So, sometimes this is all people have to look back at to see what happened in the town of Acton, is the town report. So it's a piece of history. Keep that in mind when you're writing it.
And I think that most, all departments and committees can attest to having to go back and look at old town reports themselves, so if we don't do this, you know, in 50 or 75 years, they won't, you're right, they won't have anything to look back on, so. Please, I plead with you, get your letter in by September 21st. Don't be that department head that I have to chase down. Please.
All right, and I guess we're gonna move on to payroll policy.
So as the board is aware, there have been discussions surrounding employee wages in regards to hourly employees. Most everything that's voted on at, most of your department heads are voted on at town meeting. They have salaries based on what the voters decide. We'll use my office for an example. The assistants that I have, I have an assistant line that has, you know, X amount of dollars in it, and the hourly rate is determined by myself and the board of selectmen. They've had a few situations that have come up recently, which there might be some disagreement between department heads and board of selectmen as far as what rates should be, and where people should be starting at in some departments, so you guys ask-
And also, you know, merit raises, things like that, that hadn't been done, or, so it's just something that we-
The board asked the treasurer to put together this brief policy. So this is just a first reading, just to decide, to give you something to think about. We'll put it back on the agenda next week, so that Ed and you guys can all look over it. So the board of selectmen, unless voted otherwise at the annual town meeting, have the authority to assign an employee's hourly wage. The department head may make a recommendation to the board of selectmen as to what the employee's wage should be, but ultimately, it is the decision of the board. Starting wage, as well as any future increases in wage, should be presented to the board of selectmen for consideration in writing and in advance prior to employee notification. Increases should be considered on longevity and merit. At no time will the board of selectmen approve a wage that is less than state and/or federal minimum wage. So that was the draft that came from Michelle. There was a question earlier, when this came up in conversation, if this was gonna be just for hourly employees, and how would it affect independent contractors in any way? I don't feel like it would, but something to think about.
Yeah. I can't see where it would, if somebody's, you know, contracting, we're not cutting them a hourly wage. I mean, this is-
An independent contractor, right. And I guess on behalf of the board, I just wanna make sure any department, department head that's listening, the board doesn't have any desire to micromanage and start dealing with wages. I mean, they know that they put the department heads in place for a reason, but they also need to have, make sure that they have that final say, should anything come up, you know, that they feel is not within reason, so.
It would be nice to have it discussed ahead of time, instead of signing a warrant with an increase. It's, you know, a conversation should happen before decisions are made, so that we're made aware before-
Before you see it to sign off.
Before you see it, sign off.
So take a look at this, email me any changes, proposed thoughts, ideas. We'll send it over to Ed as well, who's at a training class tonight. And we'll put it back on for next week.
Sounds good. All right, we'll move along to personnel policy.
Just a couple of copies for you. If I could draw your attention to page five. So the bottom of page five, this is from the treasurer as well, if you see that page five.
Oh, with the arrow.
See the arrow?
Yeah.
So, it already says, this is regarding health insurance. Beginning July 1st of 2015, the town may contribute to enrolled employees established health savings accounts to help cover a high deductible plan, so long as the town's group plan is eligible. Contribution rates are as follows, this was already there, this next line is new, and are contingent upon the annual approved budget. She's adding that in there because, as you know, with the recent budget and the recent healthcare changes, the town could not afford, based on what was approved at town meeting, to pay 100% of the employees' HSA accounts. So the idea behind the town employees' health insurance is that it's a, it's a fair, it's a fair policy, fair to poor, honestly, but the deductible on it is $6,000. So they contribute to the HSA for the employees. In the past, they've, before the deductible went up to $6,000, it was $4,000 before the town covered that full amount, and that was what was budgeted on going into the new year. But we don't get insurance rates till after the annual budget, so we didn't realize how much it was gonna go up. So, the town did not contribute 100% to anybody's this year. So we all pay out of pocket that $2,000 before the insurance kicks in. So, that's just to cover the board of selectmen more than anything, because you're not paying 100%. And again, we can table that for Ed's review. As is your personnel policy, so I would encourage you to read all of the other fine lines and see if there's anything else that you wanna change while we have it on the table.
All right. All right, we'll move on to Mary Grant.
The board got an email from Mr. Neal regarding concerns with the Mary Grant, and he was looking for a public plea, that some people step up and maybe consider joining the committee for a variety of different reasons. Certain people aren't being able to be reappointed, and they are low on members. I did create appointments tonight for Mr. Richard Neal and Barbara Secar, who have both shown interest in being reappointed, but those are the only two, so you've essentially lost three or four members, so.
Okay.
They are looking for people that wanna serve on the Mary Grant Committee.
If you're unfamiliar with what Mary Grant is, it's a little nature trail out on San Page Road. Right now, it has a story walk up put up by the library and a girl's goat, and with the help of a grant. The inner trail is a little less than a half a mile, and the outer trail is probably about a mile, I'm not positive, but there's a little barn there, the picnic tables, a hammock. You can ask to use the space for parties. Anything else? And they typically try to hold four events throughout the year. There's a picnic in, at the park, they do pumpkin carving.
It's a lot of fun for kids.
Yeah.
I mean, the story walk and stuff.
So they really need some, you know, more committee members to pull those community events off.
So we'll run some advertisements and put on cable internet.
Sounds good. So we're gonna do both of these tonight. Certificate of Appointment, Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Barbara Secar and Richard Neal. The selectmen of the municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as a Mary Grant Committee member within and for the municipality of Acton for June 30th, 2019, given under our hand this 21st day of August 2018. Motion to approve.
I make a motion that we appoint Barbara Secar and Richard Neal to the Mary Grant Committee until June 30th of 2019.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. You're gonna fight. It's, I'm used to-
All in favor.
Yeah, you're used to the other person seconding you.
It's more like a out of order.
Wrong side tonight. All right, so do we sign away here? Bear with me, I'll figure it out by the end of the night. Maybe. So next, we have the GIS Internet Agreement.
CAI, which is the Cardiographics Technologies. They're the ones, if you go to the town's website, actonmaine.org, right on the homepage, you see interactive maps, which walks you through a variety of different mapping assessing abilities. This contract is up for them. It's always runs through November through October. It is for $2,400. It's the same amount as last year. They have not increased in several years now, so this is just a renewal contract. While you're reviewing that, I should say that it's, we just recently finished an audit of the last three or four years' worth. We've gone through and looked at all of the map lots that the town has in their database, and we have physically gone on to the maps online, and we've double-checked to make sure that they're plotted and that they have pictures. We did find quite a few that weren't, so we've sent those all over to Cardiographics so that they can start working on them. So, it is possible that some assessors may be out in the field taking pictures to update our records. If you come across someone, know that they are always, they always have identification on them and a signed letter with a seal from the town on it, so that you can know that they're official. We also let the sheriff's department know when they're out in the field.
Make a motion to sign the GIS Internet Services contract.
I'll second that.
And that is for 11-1, 2018, through 10-31, 2019. All in favor.
All in favor.
So one of the final pieces, before the auditors can make recommendations to you, is for the board of selectmen to sign these two letters. One is addressed to Attorney Joe Lankowski, and the other is addressed to Attorney Brad Moore of Burke &amp; Clegg. They are identical letters, but they essentially are saying that the auditors at RHR Smith &amp; Company are conducting an audit and financial statements ending June 30th of 2018 for the town. This letter will serve as consent for you to furnish to our auditors all the information regarding pending threatening litigation claims or assessments. Front and back, you're welcome to read it all out loud if you'd like, but you need to sign it in order for the lawyers to release numbers to the auditors.
All right, well, for me to read? From our-
They're not to the auditors.
They're from our auditors, RHR Smith &amp; Company.
Going to Lankowski and-
By their, to the attorneys from you guys.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll second that.
I'm sorry, but if, in the back, it tells the attorney to directly send anything to RHR Smith for auditing purposes. They need to know if the town's being sued, or if there's any pending litigation.
Make a motion to sign the letter to the auditors.
I'll second that. All in favor?
To the attorneys.
To the attorneys?
To the attorneys.
To the attorneys.
I said to the auditors, didn't I?
I did put auditor's letter on the agenda, just-
That's why, that's why.
Because the auditor wrote it, so.
To the attorneys.
To the attorneys, and I meant to say that, and I, auditors came out.
I'll second that, and all in favor?
All in favor?
All in favor. Okay. We're gonna get you home.
What's that? I know, I don't feel good.
So a few weeks back, I sent you the proposed specs for the utility truck for the fire department.
Mm-hmm.
He'd like to know where that stands. This is a friendly reminder, I told him we would review it, and we'll put it on the agenda again for next week.
Ed will be here next week too, so.
Huh?
I said Ed will be here next week too.
Yes, so basically, if you can just go through it with a red pen if you'd like, he's anxious to get that advertised and get going on it.
Okay. How about a generator?
So one of the articles that was passed was at the town meeting to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $8,800 for the purchase and installation of a generator at town hall. So actually, I came into this from the treasurer, nice and pretty and pink.
Beautiful.
So, I'm assuming this is something you wanted in before winter.
Yes.
Probably a good idea to get going.
So I'll start working on a bid, square footage, and probably touch base with the fire chief. He's the one that essentially met with the individual, right, when you've got the $8,800 quote?
Yeah.
So he may have something already drafted.
Yeah, is that in the budget workbook?
Yes, but I still need specs, and I mean, I can't just call that company, I need specs to-
Okay.
Put it out publicly.
Yep, if you could do that.
So other than the, oh, no, it didn't have to be the LP.
It didn't?
Well, we, Williams made a motion to prove the article as written, so no.
Oh, but-
But we use gas here anyways, so that's, okay.
Makes sense, yeah.
All right, I'll try to bring you something for next week.
Sounds good. Notice of temporary closure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have a notice of temporary closure, Square Pond Boat Launch, Public Boat Launch, September 4th through September 21st. The Department of Inland Fisheries Wildlife will temporarily close Square Pond Water Access Facility to replace the launch ramp, so you can't launch or retrieve your boats during this time. Sorry for the inconvenience, they say.
Yeah.
So that is September 4th through the 24th, Square Pond Boat Launch will be closed. Conservation meeting has been canceled? Is that right?
Yes, it has.
Okay. Has it been rescheduled?
They are not rescheduling in August, but they are having their regular meeting in September 3rd, Tuesday, 18th, 7 o'clock.
Would you say again, the 17th? Okay.
I don't remember what I said.
That's okay, I got it.
18th, 15th at 7.
All right. Public comment is next. Do we have any public comments?
Paul Point, regarding the warrant and finance ordinance as discussed last week, it's in reasonable shape for the most part, but it definitely needs to be tightened up in terms of recovering from unforeseen slash unscheduled events, deaths, resignations, et cetera. I have submitted a proposed change that should hopefully tighten it up without creating more problems, and I'm curious to know where things stand in terms of figuring out where we are versus where we should be, if perhaps it didn't have those shortcomings from the beginning, and where we stand with the prospect of applying a tweak to that ordinance at the town, around-town meeting time or special. I don't think it's necessarily warrants coming up with any kind of special election stuff, but it needs to be fixed within the next year.
So, may I? So Paul and I did speak briefly after the meeting last week, and it does look like we're going to be, it does look like the, there was a, it does look like there was an incorrect election of an individual, and that's what we're trying to sort out now. But if we change that individual to 2019, like you and I discussed, it will sort itself out. Unfortunately, the town has had a lot of ongoing issues the last, since last meeting, and this really hasn't been top priority, so I didn't put a lot of time into it since really you and I spoke. The board has been emailed the documents, but I believe this has to be done, or they wanted to have it done at an annual town meeting, so it's gonna, kinda been set off. I've just started advertising for the position. Either way, we're gonna have the alternate position open, but it does look like, if you go back to, I think it was July of 17 minutes, that one of the members was elected for a two-year, which really should've been a one-year. There's a difference between the warrant article, but then the writing of the individual is different. Based on other situations we've had, it just hasn't been priority to me this week, so, but we will get to it, you'll see a follow-up shortly.
We're not putting them in on the moon, but-
Yep, it's on my list.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else with any public comments?
Joyce Spaksey, not about West Shore Drive.
It's not about your email, is it?
Sorry?
It's not about your email, is it? No, good.
No, no, no. Two or three meetings passed, there was a lot of discussion about Route 109 down by the Trading Post. My husband and I had an experience there two days ago, and if it wasn't for his fabulous driving, he'd probably be sending us cards. I mean, it was that close. Signs haven't been changed, things haven't happened, and I'm just curious, there was a lot of talk about having signs put in and talking maybe with DOT or whoever he needed to talk to about such things. Do we have any idea when that's gonna happen? Because if there was snow when we went by, I mean, it would've been horrendous.
You know, I've been-
I know they're behind, right?
When I'm driving around, I'm looking at different signs, and there are those reduced speed ahead, they'll put like a speed limit sign surrounded in yellow, like something different that stands out, and I don't see why we can't just replace the sign or move it a little bit.
Yeah, so, I did update the board again on this, but there is a little more to be added. As I mentioned, most of you know that I'm a selectman in Shapley. Shapley DOT met, Shapley Selectmen met with DOT over there. This is all Shapley property through the end of the bridge, so I can tell you that the town of Shapley has ordered signs, everything from the no jumping to no parking, the signs that the town is allowed to replace, Shapley has ordered, and those are in place. When we met with DOT two or three weeks ago, there were vacations going on, and there was a speed survey that was going on. The engineer that came down said that, told us that it would be middle of September before anybody came back out, but we were following up on it on our end. As far as the Acton piece of it, until they do the speed survey, there's not a whole lot of jurisdiction on the Acton side, because if you're coming down the foot of the lake, that entire bridge, I mean, if you look at where that town line is, it's Shapley. But we are at the mercy of the state, we are waiting for the speed survey to be done before they will consider lowering, lowering it. I mean, they know what both towns want, and I think the towns are in agreement, but we have to wait for them. But we are working on it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You might wanna check on the availability of the new signs that are solar and have flashers all the way around.
That's what I had mentioned a couple weeks ago, too.
Yeah, and that wouldn't mean changing speed limits, but boy, they stand out well.
They do.
And-
It's a reminder.
Is that something that we're allowed to do, though, where it's a state road?
See, and we have to, I mean, when we spoke to, when we spoke to them, they would, they gave us permission to, you know, the no parking, the no jumping off bridges, they're pretty lenient about us wanting to step in and help, but until we determine if they're gonna lower the speed sign, I mean, short of, you know, reduced speed ahead, you don't wanna spend money on signs until you know, you know-
What we need, right, but that's a good, yeah.
If they don't reduce it, just make it flash, or even the one prior to it. Any one of them, they're solar, you won't have to pay attention, have to buy them.
Yeah, they're nice, yep.
Yep, good point.
Thank you, Cindy.
So we'll, I'll send another email, asking where it left off. I know he had originally told us the middle of September.
And to be honest, I've driven through at 40, and if you're paying attention, that's slow enough to stop if you're going the speed limit and paying attention. I mean, I think people are just not paying attention.
And I mean, the sheriff's-
Not saying you weren't, but, because you guys stopped in time, but-
But like, yeah.
Talk about guys coming backing up or driving out without looking.
Right.
And that's what the sheriff's department has told us over and over, I mean, they don't, you know, there's no easy way to say it, these accidents that are happening are from human error. You know, and it's hard to, you know-
If you're driving very much, if you are driving the limit, and you are being careful, and you're going 40, and somebody just shoots out of the driveway.
Yep.
You know how fast, how long it takes a car at 40 to stop?
No, I, yeah.
Yeah, about 120 feet. The accident has, or, I won't call it an accident, I'll call it the crash has happened. Crash has happened when people aren't paying attention.
Thank you. Any other public announcements?
I live on Peacock Road on Wilson Lake, and we have a concern with non-lakefront owners mooring vessels in front of private property. And it's a twofold issue, because one of the properties is indebted to 19 homeowners from Wilson Shores One. So there's a question about who has rights, and then there's the question, the mooring by others who are non-lakefront owners. So we would like the board to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I think we've-
Yeah, I mean, just to kinda reiterate what they, the instruction they gave me after the meeting, is, I mean, a big part of it, so the initial thought is that it's a civil matter, if people are-
Some of it might be, yeah.
Right, so, but we have, we have put out a call, I have put out a call about quarter of five to the game warden that covers this area, to go over the mooring laws and exactly, you know, what the state, because from what I understand, one of the gentlemen I spoke to said that the state delegated that to the town, and the town could enforce it, so we're gonna find out if that's accurate, and then I will report back to the board as soon as I get an answer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Come on up.
Come on up. We don't bite. We don't bite.
My name's Celia Tibido, and I have property on Wilson Lake. I've been there thirty-two years, and when I was sold my property, I was told it was part of the Wilson Lake Shores Subdivision One. And on that plot plan, which I brought with me, there are nineteen owners, so we have one nineteenth ownership of that open space. Now, there's a couple people that moved across from the bridge, excuse me, which in my opinion are considered Wilson Lake Shores Two subdivision, and they should not be included into the Wilson Lake Shores One. Now, my understanding was that when the last people sold this property to the current owners, that somehow or other, they got an attorney involved, and the attorney signed over that they could have legal rights to that open space. Now, I just don't get it, because we have a plot plan that's signed by the Selectmen, it's signed by the DEP, and there are nineteen of us. If you bring somebody else in, that's twenty, and that is, it's not a legal matter. So, I don't know if it becomes a legal matter on the top of the town to contact the attorney who signed this over.
I mean, with the Board's permission, we can certainly ask, but I don't, I think that's a complete, complete civil matter. I mean, that's, you know what I mean, it's, if, I mean, I have to believe without looking at the deeds, I mean, if that twentieth person, you know, that, somebody needs to look at that deed and question it, but I don't think the town has any jurisdiction to spend taxpayer money on looking into that. I mean, you're opening yourself up to, you know, civil matters all the time, where property lines are, or septic, you know what I mean, it's, every day we get some sort of land concern like that. I mean, I certainly will call the attorney if you'd like me to, but what are your thoughts on, you think it's a civil matter? I mean, if people start questioning what's in their deed.
Well, I would like to know whether it is or not, so yes, I would like you to at least call the attorney to find out whether...
To confirm whether or not it's a civil matter, or if something the town could be...
Because I don't feel like that's something that I can make a decision on.
Okay, so we will get an opinion in writing as to whether or not it's a civil or a town matter.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to come up.
How you doing? I'm Bruce Ellis, I am the twentieth piece of property. That land was done through Lloyd and Nicholson, and that is in relationship with Mrs. Machado, Mildred Machado, who owns the property. And he was the original lawyer that did the subdivision. He said it should have been done in the past, it should have actually been done in, you know, when they first did it. He was contacted by the people that we purchased the property, he contacted Mildred, Mildred said, yes, it should have been done back then, it just was an oversight, and that's why it was added. It's a legal document, it's done by a lawyer, and in my eyes, in my family's eyes, it's not really a big, it's not a big deal. We, you know, we love it up here, this gives us access to the water, we live legitimately on the border of this piece of property. It's not like we live up the road, we are, you know, the people before me, they've been, they were there thirty-five years, and they always used it, and it's just, you know, it's just right, it was righting the wrong, you know, and, you know, I'd like the Board to consider that, you know, this should not be an issue, and I'd like to be notified if anything, you know, any meetings or anything, and what, you know...
So, it'll go under Old Business for next week, so we'll have answers next week.
Next, next meeting? Okay, excellent.
I will tell you, the only thing that surprised me when I looked at, and we only looked at this ten minutes of five, so, when I pulled up map one thirty, Lot eighteen, in our assessing, it was under...
Machado.
Machado's name, which surprised me, because we have open space on other subdivisions and other properties, and they are listed as, you know, West Shore Drive Open Space. They've never seen them listed in a name, so that...
Especially that if he's considered a property owner, he's not paying any taxes on it.
Well, nobody, well, nobody's paying taxes on that property. Well, there, that, technically, that Lot eighteen, a nineteenth percentage is on all those other property owners, that's supposed to be the case. But open space is common in subdivisions, but I've never seen it listed in someone's name like that, which kind of jumped out at me.
Yeah, the attorney said that she, she owns the property, that she's still the owner of the property.
And you think she's just, yeah, we'll look into whether or not it's civil or town, but...
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Phil Belanger, I'm one of the other owners on Peacock. My only question to the town is, there's a subdivision plan, that subdivision plan was signed, it's somewhere in the town archives somewhere, that changed, and I don't know how that changed without the town getting involved.
You have a good point, that's, yeah.
I mean, that's where the town needs to step in and say, you're changing subdivisions without anybody looking at it. I mean, there's plenty of things I'd like to change in subdivision, but, right? That's where the town needs to actually state whether they can make changes to a subdivision without a public hearing, without, again, it comes down to the compensation part, too, right?
Right, and that's a different question, I mean, and you've got, you've got a point there, I mean, because when subdivisions are put into place and plans are signed and they're filed at the registry, there are processes that you have to go through to, to update them, you're absolutely right. So, that's a completely different question, and we know that that has, there is a process that has to go through it. So, the question is, are we saying that the subdivision was changed by adding this twentieth person? That's okay, so...
Do we know?
And that's a little more of a town, that's...
Okay.
And then, and we would have a copy of it downstairs. That's a little more of a town question, I agree with you, than, you know what I mean, that makes it more town than a little less civil, so I will word my question carefully, and I will have something for you next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, we have some upcoming meetings, they're all posted on our website. First and foremost, we're having the Acton Fair, that starts the twenty-third through the twenty-sixth. Owl's Luncheon's gonna be on eight-twenty-eight, and that's gonna be at twelve noon. The transfer station is gonna be closed the twenty-ninth for paving, and also September fourth, they're gonna be closed for Labor Day. And then we have September twenty-second and the twenty-first is Apple Fest from nine to three. It's gonna be at Smith's Red Apple Farm on Route one oh nine in Acton. Food, fun, music, wagon rides, pick your own apples, they'll have vendors, so hopefully you guys can attend, it's a lot of fun.
The library will be there on Saturday.
They will be.
With a crock of chili. Well, we have both, chili and chowder, maybe? We may be, we may have both, for free samples.
Speaking of which, I have the electrician, he'll, you will get your crock pot, that's...
Okay.
Oh, nice.
Lined up, great.
More outlets.
Any other announcements?
I don't think so, I think that's about it, so...
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
And I'll second that. All in favor? Thank you, everyone, for coming out.